ASAP, they contain valuable and pertinent information which is of interest to myself and other landowners. I would like a reply in writing explaining the reasons why these letters do not appear. In the interest of transparency, fairness, and democracy, these three letters are vital importance to landowners trying to understand the drastic measures taken by these three trustees culminating in their resignation of their positions. Thank you for your prompt attention to this matter. Now, Kevin did reply to me, and he's, "Good morning, Ms. Keldger. First off, my sincere apologies for taking some time to respond to your concerns, as I've been diligently working to ascertain my abilities in this regard, including seeking legal advice given the unique circumstance stemming from the recent trustee resignations," which, fair enough. As these letters were submitted to the Ubid board, these are the letters of resignation, submitted to the Ubid board during the in-camera meeting held July 27, 2016, and as we presently do not have a quorum of the board available that can authorize me to release these to the public, we are regrettably not in a position at this time to post these letters to the Ubid website. While assuming this interim caretaker role for Ubid, I have been particularly cognizant not to overstep my authority while also respecting, in this case, the personal reasons behind the resignations of each former trustee. However, as some comment on this issue has since been published by the local print media, including from one or more of the former trustees, perhaps you could contact one of the individual former members, direct former trustees, directly and request a copy of their letter if they are prepared to do so. I'm sorry that I cannot provide more assistance. Should you require any other information, contact me, Kevin. So, on that note, it is my understanding that the three trustees' letters of resignation were actually submitted after the in-camera portion of the meeting was concluded, and that was specifically made in the, as an announcement at the end of the meeting, and that has been told me by one of the trustees. So again, I am asking that the three letters of the trustees who actually wanted to communicate with the landowners on this very dramatic and serious turn of events, that they be posted on the Ubid website. So I am again requesting that. Now, as a trustee, I'm requesting it, but my request for that remains.
Well, in response to that, Kevin, I propose that we take those three letters out of camera, and I understand they were in camera at the time. I make a motion that we, I'll make a decision, if we take it out of camera, and it can be posted on the website.
Can we leave that, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can we leave that to the next meeting? Because a lot of that stuff is discussed in camera, and I would like to have a meeting with the board prior to our next meeting, or should we?
Well, I don't see the purpose in that, Kevin Lockson. I mean, it's all business. They may, the public themselves, will take it out of camera, it can be released. Maybe I'll post on the website.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along here.
So, the continuing?
Sorry. Can I have a motion to that effect, please? Just a little?
Yes, okay. I'm calling for a motion from the board to take the three letters of resignation out of the previous board, out of the in-camera meetings, and post it on the Ubid board.
I'll second.
Oh, I need a motion first.
Sorry.
Yeah. No. Do we have a motion? Okay, seconded?
Motion. Make a motion.
I didn't make a motion.
No, I thought you made.
I didn't make a motion.
Okay. Trustee Elliot makes the motion. Trustee Keldger seconded, okay?
Is that right?
Okay, all in favor? I didn't show up to your show, sorry. Okay. Motion is carried.
And, so I'm not completing?
Oh, I'm sorry, was there a law for that?
Yeah, there is. So, I further, on August 23rd, because this is a chain of emails, I just started reading it from August 15th, so the final section is August 23rd when I got the reply from Kevin. So then I reply where Kevin suggested I contact the trustees and get the letters themselves from the trustees directly. Hello, Kevin G., or Kevin Lockson and Jacks. I actually have copies of all three letters, the trustee letters, which were sent to me by the trustees themselves. I note that the letters are addressed to you, meaning the letters from the trustees were addressed to the landowners and the trustees, and to whom it may concern. Therefore, I submit to you that, in fact, the letters rightly should be posted on the Ubid website for all landowners to read, since the issues and pertinent concerns contained in these three letters affects all of us. So that's now been accomplished, thank you. Glenn Lockson's letter in the Echo, Office 12, was full of misinformation. In fact, he referred to the three resignation letters inaccurately, declaring that no valid reason was given by the three retiring, resigning trustees. That's actually false. This is unacceptable, especially since Mr. Lockson writes as a Ubid trustee, providing false and misleading statements to the public, which is a serious breach of trust of his elected positions. Egregiously, Mr. Lockson also, in his letter to the newspaper of August 12, refers to the expired 2011 water infrastructure agreement in his letter. Quote, this is Lockson's letter, "It should also be noted that in the 2011 water infrastructure agreement, the developer is responsible for all costs related to any improvements to the Langley Lake water source and its dam, if and when the need for additional water arrives." This statement is completely false, completely false. The actual 2011 water infrastructure agreement states the opposite, and I refer you to page four of the 2011 Water Infrastructure Agreement, Section 1, Interpretation Y, but excludes, excludes any infrastructure related to Langley Lake, including without limitation the dam infrastructure at length. I request in writing, a response from Mr. Lockson, with a retraction of this false, of these false and misleading information, sent to myself, the Echo, and Record Newspaper, and posted on the Ubid website ASAP, failing this and given this serious breach of trust, and I say those words very seriously to you, I know what I'm saying. I am formally seeking Mr. Lockson's resignation effective immediately. Well, because, as a landowner, I don't like, I do not like to be lied to.
Are you finished? Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Lockson?
Yes.
And I would like the letter in writing, too, in all fairness.
Could you please do my interrupt?
Yes.
Mr. Lockson is turning now.
Okay.
So, anyway, first off, with the Echo, I reread it last night, and I did say that Alan Webb had, in my opinion, had the best excuse of all, because he sold his house and he was leaving this community, and he had, to me, the best reason to resign. The other two trustees, in my opinion...
You didn't say in my opinion.
Well, you know what?
He's talking.
I would like an answer in writing, please.
I can give you a hug, okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Fair enough. Let's move on here.
He's going to interrupt, you know.
Okay. We're getting down to reports. Kevin, the administrator's report?
Everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
So, with the unique circumstances and uncertainty of the past three months now behind us, and day-to-day operations returning to some normalcy after spending considerable time and effort consulting with the ministry and preparing for and conducting the October 22 by-election, I have just a few items to bring forward this month. Firstly, the final by monthly water toll invoices for 2016 were sent out this past week, with a due date of Thursday, December 1st. As always, please ensure you make arrangements to pay your bill either via your traditional mail through your online banking service provider, in person by check or cash, or by signing up for our automatic direct payment withdrawal service prior to the due date, in order to avoid a 10% late payment penalty. Number two, once the above noted December 1st due date has passed for the latest water toll billing period, I will be conducting a final comprehensive review of both our parcel tax and water tolls leaders for the past year, after which appropriate collection letters will be issued to those landowners with significant, so significant delinquent accounts. I will then subsequently provide the board with a report on those efforts. Thirdly, a note to any landowner who wishes to review the Ubid's annual operating budget for 2017, or the rate sheet for the 2017 toll, taxes, and related charges pending adoption of the budget and the two taxation bylaws later received. These documents will be posted to the Ubid website as soon as possible on the annual budgets and financial statements page, and the fee and taxation page respectively, likely by the next week, I believe. All questions, comments, etc. can be forwarded to my attention in person or by phone, or to my direct email address, which is admin@unionbayimprovement.com. Lastly, for the written portion of my report, I will be proposing to the trustees later on in the meeting that the Ubid Administration Office be closed for the upcoming holiday season from 4 p.m. on Thursday, December 22nd, to 9 a.m. on Tuesday, January 3rd. That concludes the written portion of my report, as I did receive a verbal request after this report was printed, just for a brief update on where we were at with our work with Coors and Associates Engineering with respect to the plans for the water treatment facility. So what I can tell the board at this point is, we have been working on a draft request for proposals with our engineers, that would be for the water treatment equipment supply material, or equipment and materials. That RFP was finalized in late July, and was intended to go out in early August, unfortunately, with the resignation that did put a number of things on hold, including this, but it is still ready to go pending further discussion with the board, which obviously I'd like to have at some point. Further to that, I also requested from them a quote to do the next phase of work on the site at the top end of McCloud Road, that would have included a topographic site survey, some base planning, and a conceptual assigned site layout. So again, I do have that quote in hand, again, it was certainly above my spending purview, which is why it has yet to be considered, because of course, to be considered by the board. So that'll be something I will certainly be bringing forward, likely as part of our next Public Works Committee meeting, so. That's my report.
Okay, thank you very much, Kevin. Could we get a motion to accept for information, the administrator's report?
I make a motion. Yeah. Motion.
So, all in favor? Motion carries. Fire chief reports.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, we're up to financial reports.
Oh, sorry, you're right, yeah. I mean, put the wrong, taken the wrong spot, I think? Yes, financial reports, Mr. Google.
So, given some time has elapsed, I wanted to make sure that the board received a copy of the fund balances report as of the end of June 30th. That is something that I have committed in previous years to provide the board twice a year, so usually I give it, you know, post-June 30th, and then once again at the beginning of the year to reflect the last six months of the calendar year. So basically, what this shows is the total of the funds in our reserve accounts, our capital reserve accounts, as well as the amount of funds sitting in our four operating reserves, as well as what was sitting in our bank accounts at the time, and a status report on our receivables. So rather than going through each reserve, I'll just state for the purposes of those intenances that, in total, in our capital reserves, at that point in time, we had just over $1.7 million in funds. In our operating reserve funds, so again, that's the fire department operation reserve, public works operation reserve, our IT or information systems reserve, and our contingency or emergency fund, we had a total of 150, just under $153,000 in reserves. At that time, cash on hand in our two primary bank accounts, we had over, just over $213,000. That was prior to us receiving the property tax allocation for 2016, which we would have received, I believe, July 1st or 2nd, or July 2nd, and that was about $352,000, so the bank account went up substantially right after that. And then, it shows that at that point in time, the water toller arrears were at about $12,000, the account receivable partial tax was about 89, but of course, you have to remember, that was prior to the September 1st, second half due date, so that number will have obviously changed. But it shows, again, that our arrears are continuing to go in the right direction. Still some work to do on the parcel tax front, but I'm much, much happier with the water charge I'm receiving. And then what I've also provided the board, rather than going back through all of the months, is I did firstly provide you a monthly statement to the end of September, so September 30th, but then I was also able to squeeze in some time and get the one for the end of October done, so I did provide that late into the work package as well. All I'll basically say on that at this point is, everything is continuing to trend according to the way it should be, we should be in really good shape going into the end of the year. We've had a couple of expenditures that have been over very, very slightly, but nothing to be overly concerned about, so, and obviously, the statements at the end of October didn't include the final bill in for water, that'll be in November, so.
All right. Thank you very much for that, Mr. Google. Could I get a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt.
Natural report?
Are we adopting or are we...?
Just accepting for any step.
Okay, accepted? So, are you right? Seconded?
Yeah, I can second.
Okay. All in favor? Any errors or omissions? Okay. Motion carries. Okay, now we go on, move on to the fire chief reports. This is a series of reports that have been made available to the trustees. They're fairly typical. They're brief, I don't see any point in reading them out at this point, there was nothing really too startling, it beats out as anyone here. So I would like a motion from the board to accept the fire chief reports for filing.
I move to receive the report.
Thank you. Trustee Keldger, and seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, and all in favor?
Yep.
All right, and let's move on to the public work superintendent report. Again, these are a series of reports that are produced on a regular basis, but because we didn't have those meetings at the time, it's basically catch-up here. There's nothing too earth-shattering here in Mr. McGill's reports, pretty much standard These are very short, and I'm sure the board has had a chance to look at them. So I would ask for a motion to receive these reports for filing.
I make a motion to receive the reports for filing.
Seconded by Trustee Keldger, okay? No errors or omissions, and everybody in favor? Okay, good. All right. Yeah, receiving file, okay. Okay, now we move on to the new business. This is the important one here, it's the 2017 annual operating budget for consideration and adoption. And that's Mr. Google, Lewis' presentation.
So again, I don't want to keep repeating myself, but obviously, given the unique circumstances of the last couple of months, I didn't have the usual opportunity to sit down with the board and kind of go over potential plans for the coming year, and to discuss potential drafts of these agreements, so I basically took it upon myself to kind of put these together for the board's consideration. Again, given there wasn't a lot of opportunities to dialogue with the government's board, this represents pretty well a status quo budget for the coming year, so that basically means that outside of some cost of living increases, and some increases in revenue just because of either new connections or new parcels being added to the system, that the rates will be staying pat. So that means that the water toll rates will stay at the $75 by monthly base rate with the current excess rates in place. As such, we do not require to do a bylaw for that, because the rates are staying the same. However, for the fire protection and street lighting taxation requests, and for our parcel tax requests, even though, again, those are staying pat as well, we are obligated to do new bylaws in that regard, so those will be coming up at the conclusion of discussion of the budget. So, in the auspice of time, rather than going through each individual apartments, I can certainly provide those in the audience a kind of a reflection of what we'd be looking at for the coming year on a consolidated basis. So again, we're looking at the primary revenues being property tax, both with respect to the fire department and the street lighting, so that again, would be 452,660 combined. With respect to water tolls, I am projecting about $345,000. Again, my budgets have always reflected, you know, airing low on revenue, high on expenditures, and as long as you can have a balanced budget, you're doing well. It is likely we will see more revenue than that with respect to the water tolls, but those estimates are based on an averaging spreadsheet, but I did provide the board that I won't get into because it's somewhat complicated, but it does provide us a very good look as to what we can expect year per year. And then parcel tax as well, parcel tax will be at 242,535, that's about on par with where we're at right now, because we did have a couple, two or three parcels come online in the last year. So that will result in total revenues anticipated for 2017 being $1,610,345 versus total operating expenses of $428,110. That does include modest cost of living increases for wages, which was about 1.3%. That also will include some modest, or some reported anticipated increases for things like utilities, so hydro, insurance, vehicle insurance, or ICBC, that basically take a look at what the anticipated increases are going to be for those who don't seem to budge out. Total administration expenses are being projected to be to $204,000, so that would be total expenditures overall of $632,190, which will then allow us to contribute $429,155,000 to our capital reserves, which will result in a balanced budget. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions that the trustees, any of the trustees may have.
Anything from the board, and with respect to the budget?
One thing I would like a bit of clarification on, and not necessarily here, but in the future, is exactly who decides where the parcel taxes are going? You know, I think in the past, they used to be for the fire department reserves, if I'm not. Originally, that's where they started, so I don't know how, or who decides where they're going to, I see they're going into the infrastructure.
For a lot of things.
Yeah.
Basically, local government act it takes up.
Okay.
That is, been a longstanding requirement of all parcel taxes. It doesn't mean, and I have to investigate this, whether we could have a separate parcel tax, or some kind of separate taxation for fire, I mean, again, that's why we do it through the property tax, or we could continue to do it through that medium, but my understanding in talking to the ministry and reviewing the local government act, is parcel taxes are designed for water purposes only.
Okay. Thank you, that clarifies it.
All right, any further questions on the budget? Okay, could I get a motion to adopt the budget as presented? Why, Mr. Google?
I make a motion to accept that as presented. Seconded, Mr. Google.
Okay. Any errors or omissions noted? No? Okay, so we take a show of hands on that? Okay, the motion has, will be carried. All right, now, I guess we move on to the bylaws. Now, these bylaws are, this is what enables us as a local improvement district board to tax these people. In essence, that's what it means. So, what I have to do is read these bylaws in, if you will, and they have to be read once, then they have to be read a second time for reconsideration. So, we will start with bylaw number 267, and this is a bylaw for levying taxes on the land and improvements within the Union Bay Improvement District, here and after referred to as the Improvement District, for fire protection and street lighting purposes. The trustees of the Union Bay Improvement District in open meeting assembled and act as follows. The sum of $452,660 is required by the Improvement District for fire protection and street lighting purposes for the year 2017. A tax at a rate determined to be necessary to raise the forfeit sum is hereby levied for the year 2017 on all land and improvements as defined in the School Act, within the Improvement District in accordance with section 711 of the Local Government Act. The said taxes shall be due and payable as provided in the Taxation Rule Area Act, and if delinquent, shall bear interest at the rate set out under the Taxation Rule Area Act until paid or recovered. This bylaw may be cited as the Fire Protection and Street Lighting Taxation Bylaw 2017. Now, reconsideration, and we go back again.
So, Mr. Chairman, we do actually have to have a vote for the first reading?
Okay, I'm glad you pointed that out, there are votes, we have the vote. Could I get a motion from the board to adopt the first reading of bylaw number 267?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, therefore, that motion is passed, so we go back again. On reconsideration, bylaw number 267, Fire Protection, Street Lighting Taxation 2017. A bylaw for levying taxes on the land and improvements within Union Bay Improvement District, here and after referred to as the Improvement District for fire protection and street lighting purposes. The trustees of the Union Bay Improvement District in open meeting assembled and act as follows. The sum of $452,660 is required by the Improvement District for fire protection and street lighting purposes for the year 2017. A tax at a rate determined to be necessary to raise the forfeit sum is hereby levied for the year 2017 on all land and improvements as defined in the School Act, within the Improvement District in accordance with section 711 of the Local Government Act. The said taxes shall be due and payable as provided in the Taxation Trackits Rule Area Act, and if delinquent, shall bear interest at the rate set out under the Taxation Rule Area Act until paid or recovered. This bylaw may be cited as the Fire Protection and Street Lighting Taxation Bylaw 2017. Okay, could I have a motion to accept the second... Okay, could I have a motion to accept the second reading of the bylaw number 267?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, that deals with bylaw number, the motion is carried. That deals with bylaw number 267.